We'll execute a roll call. Carrie.
Carrie Fralino.
Great, thank you. Joe? Joe Gladia? No, okay. Mary?
Mary Kuchewski, Marlboro.
Thank you. Sue?
Sue Stoffey, Marlboro.
Thank you. Heather?
Heather Summer Hebron.
Thank you. Pam?
Pam Farrington, Marlboro.
Thank you. Mike Sherrill?
Mike Sharon Hebron.
Gabe?
Gabe Marks Hebron.
Thanks. Eric? Erica? No. Kirsten?
Kirsten.
Great. And Mike Morris Hebron. Alright, so we have a quorum. So we'll go to item two, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, at this point, we'll move on to public comment. Spare me for one moment. Hebron Andover and Marlboro Community Engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. And Gabe, I'd ask if you could keep the time for us like you normally do. Thank you. At this point, there's nobody physically present for the meeting, so I'll ask if there's anybody online who would like to give public comment. If so, go ahead and raise your digital hand and/or make yourself known, and Eric will let me know what names it. Okay, we're not seeing anybody, so if you're-- give you one more chance. If there's anybody that's here to make public comment online, just make yourself known. None? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to item four, the addition or deletion of agenda items. Is there any motions to add or delete any agenda items from the board? Going once, going twice. Alright, hearing none. We'll move on to item four, the report of the auditor.
So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Eva, who's going to introduce our auditor.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone. We currently have, I see Catherine Patnodd, who is part of PKF O'Connor Davies, and she's our managing partner for the audit. I do not see Joe, her colleague, so maybe he might join us. Maybe Catherine will handle it on her own, but I'm going to turn it over to Catherine.
Alright. Hi, I'm Catherine Patnodd. I'm the manager on the audit, and I guess if Joe's not on, I will start off. You should have all received the financial statements. There's the annual financial report and the federal and state single audit. The opinion on your financial statements was an unmodified or a clean opinion. At the beginning of the financial statements is management's discussion and analysis, which is an executive summary of the fiscal year operations. So it's a good summary of what went on during the year. You'll see your financial highlights in there with the government-wide and fund financial statements, significant budgetary highlights of the general fund, each major fund's operating results. It also talks about capital assets, where you had additions of 700,000, and long-term debt, which decreased by 2.5 million. In the general fund, the GAAP basis, your Exhibits C and D, you had assigned fund balance on Exhibit C of 1.5 million, and your net change in fund balance was a decrease of 251,000. In the footnotes to the financial statements, the one item of note is on page 51, there was a prior period adjustment for the implementation of GASB number 87, which was on leases. The general fund, on the budgetary basis, is found on RSI's 1A and 1B. The revenues and other financing sources came in under budget by a net of 1.7 million, which includes intergovernmental grants, which were below budget by 401,000, which was primarily the excess cost grant. And you also had an appropriation of fund balance for 1.3 million. For your expenditures and other financing sources, those came in under budget at 1.4, almost 1.5 million, which included instruction, special education, under budget by 207,000; support services, students, under budget by 228,000; central services by 385,000; operation and maintenance of plant, under by 163,000; and transportation, under by 251,000. We also have your federal and state single audits. The federal single audit was new this year, primarily due to the SRR and other ARPA monies that you received. So we tested the special education cluster and the educational stabilization fund, which included those SRR grants, and we had no findings or question costs. On your state single audit, we tested the Healthy Foods Initiative and adult education programs, and we had no findings or question costs. You should have also received a communication with those charged with governance, where we discuss our responsibilities, which is to form and express an opinion about whether the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. It indicates that we are independent of the region. It also states that we have no uncorrected misstatements and no material audit adjustments. Some of the new applicable GASB statements are GASB 96, unsubscription-based information technology arrangements. This will be applicable for fiscal year '23. This is essentially the least standard that was implemented in fiscal '22, but for IT subscriptions. So the district will need to gather and review all IT contracts and agreements, and we'll be sending out more information on that standard fairly shortly. And the other new statement that's coming up is GASB 101, uncompensated absences. This updates the recognition and measurement guidance for the liability. We haven't evaluated its effect on the district, but it only affects the government-wide financial statements. And the last item is the recommendations. The one recommendation is on capital asset record-keeping, that we noted during our audit that there were differences in the capital asset beginning balances from the prior year, and that the current capital asset software allows changes to prior-year capital asset additions, including the depreciation, which caused these differences. So our recommendation is that the district review the capital asset accounting software, or-- and determine if it meets the needs, or if the district should consider other software options. So we'll be meeting with Eva on that in the coming months. And the district did resolve two comments from the prior year, and construction progress is now properly accounted for by project, and accounts payable was properly processed in the accounting system. And so, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I'll open it up to the board. If you have questions, make it known with your digital hand, and Eric will let me know. Nothing? Okay, I don't think there's any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Yeah, so, it is, that's the conclusion of the audit. I would simply, I think it would be, I would be remiss if I didn't point out the fact that these auditors come in every single year and go through this process, and obviously, this was really the first time I've had any level of involvement in it. But obviously, when you're talking about a $30 million operating budget, there's a lot of i's to dot and t's to cross. And I just want to make sure that we recognize Eva's diligent oversight of the budget process. She has been just truly invaluable to me throughout the six, seven months that I've been here, and has made sure that I have a clear understanding of things, and then make sure that she reminds me when I don't have a clear understanding of things, and then I just turn to her and she helps me out. So, the fact that, again, the auditors go through this process, it's an extensive audit, and have basically identified very few recommendations, and basically said, "You've remedied the things that we identified last year," is just a testament to the work that she does. So I just think it's important to recognize that.
I think I heard the gold standard phrase, which was, "No material adjustments," right? So, thank you from the auditors. Appreciate your work, and Eva, as usual, awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, let's move on to item six, the student representative reports. Why don't we have Eva, if you're out there?
Yes, hello. One of the things I would like to report is the Ram junior prom coming up. A lot of people are excited about that. I know a lot of my friends and I as well have shopped for dresses, and people are posting on their Instagram, and everyone's really, just really excited about that. Another thing I wanted to point out was the Respect Day that occurred. In my opinion, it went really well. I thought that there were some really productive conversations. And I know that a few of my friends may have thought differently, but I think it was definitely a good step in the right direction.
That's great. Thank you. Rowan, are you out there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, you're good. Go ahead.
Okay. So, I got a few things I would like to discuss today. First, I just want to say that even though, obviously, the first diversity presentation that we had for March 2nd was postponed, after talking with both students and teachers, obviously, we're still anticipating that, and it's something that people, obviously, are still, still want to see happen. So, even though it was postponed, knowing that, you know, that's still coming, has been a sigh of relief from my perspective, from what I've talked about with students and teachers. So there's that. The second thing actually came from Ms. Mead, the English, the head of the English department. She wanted me to send out the message that her UConn ECE English classes are collaborating with the Media Center to host a pledge-to-pause educational campaign at all lunch waves throughout the week. And this is where the students of her classes will supervise activities and provide informative material, advising peers, basically, to be aware of what they forward on social media, and, you know, designed to bring awareness to the ethics behind the use of technology. And this will lead up to National Unplugging Day on Friday, where students will be, students will have the opportunity to set goals for themselves to unplug. So, that's happening this week. And then, lastly, and I'm sure Mr. Morris might be touching on this, I have a sneaky suspicion he might, regarding the events that occurred recently with the wrestling. So, obviously, for those of you who don't know, they were basically stripped of a title that they did win for a moment, following they did lose points because there was a wrestler who stepped on the mat with his straps off. I just wanted to say, as, you know, somebody for speaking for the students, and this is also a teacher thing as well, because I know teachers were also unhappy about this. It's completely, in my opinion, ridiculous that this caused Ram to lose this title, because A, he was, he already wrestled, and B, it was such a, just a general, such a, in my opinion, stupid rule. And obviously, I'm not the only one who thinks this at Rams, and everybody I've talked to has, you know, wants this call to be overturned. And there's also a petition going. I actually don't know if it's over yet to, but there's an online petition to get the call reversed, and it actually has over 3,000 signatures so far. So I just, yeah, I wanted to chime in to voice my displeasure at the call that was made to overturn Ram's victory. So, that, and yeah, so that's my report. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay, so the chair's report. So, first, what I would like to do is just say that I did have an opportunity to watch a lot of wrestling the last couple of weekends, and the things that I'd like to point out are that we had some pretty exceptional performance at the Class M's, specifically on an individual level, as well as a team level. And we had a couple of guys that really stood out, a couple of wrestlers that really stood out. We had Mike Markey, who was a Class M champ. We also had Ben Fornier, who was a Class M champ. And then we had Dylan Devine, who was in the finals as well. And then go on to the next following week in the open, you had Ben Fornier also make it to be the runner-up in the Class M, which is, I'm sorry, in the state open, which is pretty exceptional. And then also, Dylan Devine wrestled back hard and for third, which is extremely hard in that tournament. And so, and Mike Markey and a few others all also performed pretty well. So, just in general, an awesome job by the wrestling team, and couldn't be more proud to have been a Ram parent and Ram representative sitting there. I don't think I have anything else significant. I'd just say, my son is also eagerly working towards the junior prom, so I hope everybody's excited about that. And, oh, the one other thing, I'm not sure if it's since the last meeting or not, but it might have been the last regular meeting, but I will say that I had an opportunity to attend the school musical, and what an awesome job by that entire group. I mean, really, exceptional job. And it just didn't surprise me, given our musical program that we have here, and the drama club and everything that they do, but just fantastic job, and it was a pleasure to participate. I think that's all I have. I'll move on to item eight, the report of the superintendent.
So, thank you very much. I, I'll start just echoing your congratulations to the wrestlers and the wrestling team for their performance over the past couple of weekends. Certainly, something for the district to be very proud in, proud of. And I'd also like to recognize the students and staff that were involved in the High School Musical production. You and I were able to attend the same show, the matinee Saturday show. We were wrestling tournament in the morning and had play in the afternoon, and both things were just great events. And those kids, those kids in that production just really, they did phenomenal job. I was, I've never seen High School Musical, and now I, now I need to see the movie, because the play was so good. I, I don't think the movie's going to be as good, even close. So, I also want to make sure that we officially recognize and welcome Pam Farrington, our newest board member. I don't think you were at the, this is the first board meeting that we've had since you've joined the board. So Pam, I know you're here tonight, and welcome, and we look forward to having an opportunity to see in person soon. Another group of students that I want to make sure that I recognize are our student musicians and performers that were with us for an evening of jazz a couple of weeks ago. It was a great show. Typically, I am able to share a link. Eric does a great job of recording those concerts, and typically, we, we put those up on the district's YouTube, the music department's YouTube channel. We were unable to do that because of the fact that this is actually a joint concert with students from Bacon Academy, as well as the middle school in Colchester. So, because of the fact that we didn't have the permission to project those students' likenesses on our, on our TV station, we weren't able to do that. But I was here, and it was just a, I mean, it's a great show. I'm a big jazz fan, and it was really cool, too, because the teachers from the different programs actually joined an ensemble that played at the start of it. And so we got to see our teachers showing off their chops as well, which, which was really, really fun. The, a couple of things that I just want to make sure that I highlight, board members, I've been filling you in about some of the things that have taken place over the past few weeks since our last board meeting. I am very excited about the fact that we are able to, effective March 1st, reinstate free meals for all students. That, the government's going to provide some grant funding that's going to enable us to provide that starting March 1st. We've put communications out to families, and I know that's something that the board had a, had a desire to do. We weren't financially able to do it if we remained in the school year, so I'm glad that this is something that we're able to put back into place. I, also, speaking of food, I want to make sure that I congratulate our food service manager from Woodsons, Kate Casselli. She was one, I'm sorry, she was one of thirty, one of 13 grant recipients out of 32 people across the state, 32 food service programs across the state, to be awarded the National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistance Grant. That's a mouthful, but I think it right. It's a competitive grant. We've applied for, Kate's applied for it several times over the past three years, and we, the district has been awarded $25,000. And that $25,000 is going to allow Kate and the district to purchase salad bars, purchase and install salad bars at both the middle school and the high school, which I think is a great opportunity for offering some healthy options for our students to have and staff to enjoy as well. We've had, a couple of weeks ago, on February 9th and 10th, we had some events for our rising, soon to be, it's already crazy, we're thinking about it already, but our rising ninth graders, our students are going to be leaving Ram middle school, coming up to the high school. We had a parent information night, where parents were exposed to the program of studies. Our department coordinators did an outstanding job of presenting information about their individual departments, their program of studies, and the different career pathways that students have. It was, it was really informative. It was the first time, obviously, that I had a chance to do it. The following day, on February 10th, the students come in that morning and have an opportunity to hear about those things as well, directly from staff in the building. But then the cool part, too, is the students actually get kind of divvied up into smaller groups and tour all around the high school. And I was, I was out and about in the building that day, and I ran into a couple of tours, and it was, it was some shock and awe on some of their faces, when I think they started thinking about, "Holy cow, we're going to be stepping up into here next year." But again, a lot of excitement from the students, and I think it's a great way for our high school staff and to get those kids ready for the next step in their, in their academic career. So that was a cool thing. The last thing I'll mention, as far as a report for this evening, is the fact that this coming weekend, weather permitting, Ram is going to be hosting the Eastern Regional, Eastern Region Middle School Music Festival. It's an annual event that includes student musicians from across the Eastern region of the state, who have been selected to perform based on auditions done earlier in the year. There are several, I think 11, Ram students that are going to be representing Ram. They auditioned, they were identified through a large number of students that auditioned, again, across the Eastern region, and we will be hosting that here at Ram. It's slated, we're going to have, they're going to be spending Friday afternoon into Friday evening rehearsing and getting ready, and the actual festival itself is on Saturday. Am I getting that correct, Eric? Good. My music guy's here, he's telling me I'm on track. Again, we're keeping our fingers crossed. Of course, we are, have a weather event looking at tomorrow, so that's going to impact school. It doesn't look like the weather event for Friday is going to impact school at this point, but it could impact things for the weekend, and I'm keeping my fingers crossed and hoping that's not the case. But, but we're certainly excited to host and excited to see our Ram kids doing a great stuff. So, that concludes my report.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Alright, so we'll move on to item nine, the consent agenda, and approval of the minutes. So, at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from January 23rd, 2023, the Board of Education meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Sue. Is there a second? Gabe, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. I'll also recommend, I'm sorry, entertain a motion to approve the minutes from January 31st, 2023, the Board of Education Budget Workshop.
So moved. Mike Sharon?
Thanks, Mike. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sue. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Also entertain a motion to approve the minutes from February 8th, 2023, the Board of Education Budget Workshop.
So moved.
Who was that? Sorry.
Carrie.
Thank you, Mary. Is there a second?
Mike, it was Carrie.
Oh, Carrie, I'm sorry. Thank you, Carrie. Is there a second?
Mary will second.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate that. Is there any conversation? Hearing no discussion, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, that also carries unanimously. And finally, entertain a motion to approve the minutes from February 15th, 2023, the Board of Education Budget Workshop.
So moved.
Alright, Gabe got you, and Sue, I'm going to assume you'll second.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that also carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Which moves us on to item 10, old business, and a discussion of the budget timeline. Colin, you want to?
Sure. Yeah, I could just kind of walk, walk the board through this. So, this was a, I felt it was important to include this on the agenda, because at our last budget workshop on February 15th, we discussed the budget timeline, we discussed the adoption of our proposed budget. And I was super excited, because it seemed like there was a lot of support from the board. Of course, I'll remind board members, we're looking later on in our agenda to potentially accept the audit that was just presented to us, as well as the surplus that comes along with that audit, and allocate those funds to some of the, to the capital non-recurring account, and use that money to actually offset the proposal for next year by, by taking some, by purchasing some items or some services with those surplus funds, which would reduce our budget down from the 4.71 to a 3.52. And again, I was very excited about the fact that there was excitement about it, and there was some interest in, hey, could we adopt the budget at this particular meeting? And really, the long and the short of it is, is I don't think that we should. And I've discussed this with, with Chairman Morris about it, about the fact that I don't think that we should do that, because of the fact that we've really got a clearly, well, there's a couple of things. Number one, there's a Board of Education policy that outlines kind of the fact that we need to have a public budget hearing. That has not happened yet. We need to provide the public with an opportunity to weigh in on the budget and speak to their concerns about the budget, or give their thoughts about the budget. I also have yet to present to all the different boards of finance. I was able to present to the Marlboro Board of Finance last Thursday, and I'm scheduled for, to do both Marlboro and Andover within the next few weeks. But again, I think it's important that I present the budget to those different organizations as well, to give them an opportunity to weigh in and ask questions, if they have any. Right now, our public budget hearing and the special meeting to adopt the budget is scheduled for April 3rd. I think we should adhere to that timeline. The other thing, too, that we had discussed at length over the past couple of meetings is the idea of promoting the budget. And the legal opinion that I've ended up getting about this is, really, once the board has adopted a budget, then there's a potential referendum to, for the towns to look at adopting our budget. And once the board has adopted a budget, we really have to remain silent. We can't promote the budget. We can, we can ask questions, but we really have to remain very neutral and quiet about, about the budget. So, that takes away any opportunity that we would have to go out and publicly support the budget, talk about the budget. And I think that's something that we don't want to take away from ourselves. I think we'd really be tying our hands if we ended up doing that. So again, our timeline is the scheduled public budget hearing is April, and the special meeting to adopt the budget is April 3rd. We have our annual budget meeting on May 1st, and then our budget referendum is May 2nd. And my recommendation to everybody is that we stick to that plan. And, and, you know, Mike and I had a conversation about the possibility of, you know, looking at policy and seeing if that's something that maybe our policy subcommittee would consider changing. We'd obviously want to make sure it's in line with what is legislatively accurate and what we're supposed to do. But again, I think for the current time, for the current process, we should follow the plan that we've, we've established.
Okay, so I'll open it up to questions, and Sue, I see your hand raised. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I was wondering if we're going to do a one-page flyer for the budget?
Sue, absolutely, we are. What I'm planning on doing is, once we get through this meeting, and again, what I'm anticipating is the, is the board is going to accept that surplus from last year, and make some motions to allocate those funds, that's going to enable us to reduce the budget from what it currently is. And then, from there, I'm going to be able to create that one-page, the one or two-page flyer, because right now, it would, if I had already done it, it would be reflective of 4.71, which is not an accurate representation of where we're going to be. So, once we get to that place where we make all those changes, then I absolutely am going to do that.
I also think at the end of the last meeting, Eva, Eva had commented that there's still some opportunities for some potential cost savings here and there, depending on how things turn, shake out with the insurance.
Yes. So, there's a couple of things. There's, there's insurance. There also is excess cost, the formula that's used to identify how much districts are given with regards to excess cost, which is actually a-- Got to line up blank in there. It's--
It's high-cost special ed expenditures.
Thanks, Laura.
We get a certain dollar amount. So, in the state of Connecticut, for this fiscal year, it was, it was designed to be a tiered, a three-tiered system. And this year, because everyone was given a certain percentage, the percentage was actually increased, because the dollar amount threshold that was in the governor's budget was not expended-- expended. So for this year and for next year, our percentage is 88%. In the budget currently, for the next proposed budget, is only 70%. So that's going to help revenue. But we also have the potential of two more students that might be outplaced, so our expenditures might go up a little bit, too. So we're still finalizing that, and the People's Services Department is still working on those IEPs.
Okay. And I think there's, there was one other thing. Is it Hebron locking in fuel or something like that?
Correct. So the CROG bid has finalized. Hebron just has not, at this moment, locked in a rate. So I'm not sure when their plans are to negotiate with the contractor that was awarded the bid, so that we could know a fixed number for the budget.
Okay. So we still have a few things left to shake it out. So I guess I'll just open it up to the board. If there's any questions or discussion concerning what Mr. McNamara's recommended as far as the budget timeline.
I have one other thing, too.
Go ahead, Sue, and then we'll come back to Gabe.
Okay. I just wanted to ask, which, when is the Hebron Board of Finance presentation?
That the Hebron Board of Finance presentation is March. I have March 14th as my hold date.
Try my best.
That'd be great. Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks.
Yep. Okay. I'm sorry, Sue, go ahead.
I forgot my question. I don't even know what I was going to ask.
That's all right. We'll come back to it in new business.
Yep.
Okay, is there any other questions? Any other comments? Anything, Eric? No? Okay. All right. Hearing none, then we'll move on to new business, item 11. Item 11.1 is the discussion and possible action regarding the 2021-2022 audit. So I'll just give Colin, just if you want to just tee us up to.
Yeah, actually, I'm just going to turn it right over to Eva. She's going to talk a little bit about the surplus, and so Eva, if you don't mind.
So I'm not sure if everyone has their books with them or not, but if you want to look at it later, if you don't have your books, that's fine. So if you go to page, my apologies, because I'm trying to get there, page 59 of the budget book, you're going to see that in column, in the first column, which is general fund, there's excess deficiencies of revenues over expenditures, which is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 from the bottom. You're going to see a dollar amount of $363,436. That is the amount of surplus that is left for us to be able to allocate to the 2% nonlapsing or capital nonrecurring fund, as we have so known to have named it here at Ram. So that basically what Catherine had presented tonight, you guys as the board will be hopefully accepting the audit as presented, and then hopefully, moving forward, being able to reduce next year's budget, the projected budget by that surplus dollar amount with the itemized items that are coming in the next 11.2.
Okay. So why don't we get the motion on the floor, and then we can certainly discuss it if there's any questions or debate or anything like that. So at this point, I would entertain a motion that the Region 8 Board of Education accept the 2021-2022 audit with a surplus fund balance of $363,436. Gabe made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Who was that? I'm sorry. Heather, thank you, Heather. All right. At this point, is there any discussion? Anybody here? Okay. Hearing no discussion, then we'll actually do a roll call vote on this. Carrie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Mike, Sharon?
Yes.
Gabe?
Yes.
Eric, did you join us?
Joe's here.
Yeah, I got Joe, okay. Kirsten?
Yes.
Yes, and I vote yes. So that carries with 10 votes. All right, thank you. All right. So that being passed, then we'll move on to 11.2. And this is the discussion and the possible action regarding the allocation of the 2021-2022 surplus funds to the capital nonrecurring projects. So again, just based on what Eva just talked to us about, there are some recommendations from the administration about how to allocate, potentially allocate those funds to offset the budget. And so there's an itemized list here. And so what I, again, what I would recommend that we do, unless somebody objects, is let's go ahead and entertain the motion, and then if there's any debate or discussion, we can certainly do that. Hearing no objections to that? I'll go ahead, I will entertain a motion to allocate the FY 2021-2022 audited surplus totaling $363,436 to the following projects in the specified amounts. $104,000 for the HVAC view unfunded mandate. $79,493 feminine hygiene product dispensers and unfunded mandate. $13,500 for the shot clock scoreboards unfunded mandate. $12,000 for the wrestling mats. $43,650 for the baby grand piano. $68,250 for the touch view monitors. $17,325 for the concrete containment of soil and infield mix gravel. $17,000 for the dollars for the door locks for the science classrooms and bathrooms and FOB access. $7,000 for the commercial washers and dryers. $1,218 for the field improvements project, which is the remaining amount of surplus. Is there a?
So, so moved. Mike, thank you for making, thank you for making it easy for us just to say so moved. Great job.
And is there a second?
I'll second, Mike Sharon.
I'll go with, I think Heather beat you to that one. All right. Given that that motion is on the floor, I'll open it up for any discussion or debate.
One thing open for discussion?
Please.
Just to avoid all the cross-referencing between the different documentation. Generally speaking, are these numbers the full amounts, or is it leaving? The shot clock, the shot clock amount seems consistent, like that's going to completely cover it. Do these numbers mean generally leave a, does it cost more than $43,650 for the piano? Or is that, that's going to completely cover?
We're anticipating that's going to cover the cost of the piano.
That was something, so generally speaking, that's the case for all of these things?
Correct. So there's, there are some things where we're basing the dollar amount off of what the anticipated cost is, right? And so we're going to go a little, we're going to, we're going to err on the side of caution so that we don't have to come back to the board in a month from now and say, hey, we need an extra $2,000, right? So.
There's nothing on here that's about like half of the anticipated cost.
No, no, this will cover us. Not going to.
Okay. Does that answer your question? You're good? Okay. Are there any other questions or debate? Anything, Eric? No? Okay. That being said, we'll do a roll call vote on this as well. Carrie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Mike Sharon?
Yes.
Gabe? Eric, I don't think has joined us. No? Kirsten?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right. So those two motions carry. Thank you for that. I think that's going to go a long way towards helping us move this budget across the finish line. All right. So that being said, we'll move on to 11.3, which is the vision of graduate skills and disposition.
So this is a presentation that I think we've been anxious to do for the board. This is something that was shared with the program subcommittee, I believe, last school year. And I believe when I came on board and was having different meetings with board members, I met with Mary, who is the committee chair for that, and she was excited about this presentation that the high school administration had done for the program subcommittee. And so really, we've just been looking for an opportunity to bring this forward to the board. This is really an outcome of really the current strategic plan that has been in place. And the first objective for that strategic plan was to identify and define the skills and dispositions expected of Region 8 students for success in college, career, and citizenship, such as tolerance, grit, problem-solving, integrity, student A D Cs, and adaptability. And I know a ton of work has gone into where we are right now, and there's still work to be done, but I thought it would be prudent to ask Penny, as the high school principal, who's joining us from home, and Chris, and they're going to talk a little bit about the work that they've been doing, and I appreciate y'all being here.
Yeah. Take it over.
All right. Well, good evening. I apologize, I have a rough voice today, I'm battling a sinus infection, so, excuse me. But we should start by just sharing that this has been something that has existed at Ram for a long time. We've had a senior portfolio that is a credits worth for the, for, it's an entire credit that seniors complete in order to be able to graduate, and it is a requirement of the state graduate requirements. So we are fulfilling that with this. But we have, in the past several years, really been working towards updating this and bringing it to a new level. So we'll begin on the first slide. Just giving you some background, that we did create the skills and dispositions several years ago, even before COVID, as a district. We had all middle school and high school staff work together in interdisciplinary teams in order to identify the things that we all agreed were going to be the main skills that we would want all of our students to have in order to graduate as successful people going into the workforce, or going into college, or into the military, whatever it is that they were planning to do. So our, we went through a process where everybody had an opportunity to have a voice, and we created categories. We had interdisciplinary teams that then narrowed down the categories. We had staff review and give feedback, and then we created a final product that was then presented to the Board of Ed. And the next slide. So you'll see here, we have, this is actually a picture that was taken in the high school atrium. It is the visual that we have showcasing the five skills and dispositions, critical thinking, communication, motivation, collaboration, and integrity. Next slide. So then what we had to do was create rubrics that were going to help both teachers and students be able to identify, you know, where they thought they were with these particular skills and dispositions. So one of the main purposes of having skills and dispositions is for students to be able to, be able to self-assess and be able to identify where they are throughout their four years. And actually, this is something that starts in middle school as well. And so these rubrics are created in the form of saying, I, as a student, believe that I am strong in this area because, or I'm working on this, or this is an area of growth for me. So the rubrics were created by, again, interdisciplinary teams, both the middle school and the high school. We presented the draft rubrics to the entire staff for feedback, and then also, you know, everybody that, both middle school and high school, teachers, staff, non-certified, you know, everybody, everybody was involved with taking a look at this and having feedback. And then the rubrics were then finalized. And these, these rubrics, excuse me, are used by students as of today. Next slide. So then we had a committee back in 2019 and 2020 that was specifically looking at our portfolio process. So our skills and dispositions are one piece of the pie, but then how it is that our seniors are then showcasing their growth in these areas is a separate piece. And so we had a subgroup of middle, middle and high school staff that actually Mr. Mater oversaw that year, where they identified the things that, you know, that, how they wanted to see this be able to progress and the changes that they wanted to make in this area. And to, you know, to be able to really say, are we doing this in the most meaningful way that we can? You know, is this looking, something that we think that really showcases what our students can do in these areas? And so they were definitely looking at many different aspects of it. And so that work got a little bit halted by COVID, as you can see from the timeline. But I will pass it along to Chris Mater, who is going to then proceed with this presentation.
Eric, you can go to the next slide, please. So those two groups, basically, we had, the one that Penny led was the assessment group, which really, they were tasked with forming the rubrics in each of the skill and disposition areas, again, with that student language, to give students the opportunity to kind of assess on where they are in each one of those skills and dispositions. And then the group that I had led, which really was tasked with looking at what a quality senior portfolio and capstone process looks like, and bringing some of those recommendations back to the whole faculty, as well as the leadership team. So now, kind of where I'm going to pick up is where we're merging all the work from the 2019 and 2020 school year in those two professional development groups, and kind of putting some of that stuff together, as well as implementing some of it. You could see, as you know, like, pretty sidetracked during at least one of the school years in regards to the COVID pandemic. So we were picking up and kind of putting those pieces together and looking at implementation going forward during the 21-22 school year. So looking really, coming out of a great deal of the work that those professional development groups had done, we solidified the skills and dispositions as we moved into the end of the pandemic, and knowing really that we wanted to implement the skills and dispositions with fidelity, we also realized that we had a good opportunity to utilize the skills and dispositions in the revised senior portfolio process and put all that different work and all that stuff together in a meaningful way. Eric, you can go to the next slide. So where we are now is, again, coming out of the assessment and senior portfolio professional development groups, we recognize the need to continue to collaborate with the committee, but also with our students, as we continue to figure out the process, revise and solidify the process for the skills and dispositions implementation, as well as for the senior portfolio. So you'll see the committee work continuing to this day in the vision of the graduate committee. You'll see the collaborative process that we're engaging in with in our students, which I'll speak to in a minute, with the senior pilot portfolio. So really, we're looking at using these two groups, the senior pilot portfolio, as well as the vision of the graduate committee and the advisory committee, to look at strong implementation of these, of these ideas. Next slide. So one of the things we wanted to do is, we knew that we wanted to have a strong visual, but like I said earlier, we also wanted this to not just be an artifact on the wall. Really wanted it to be something that could potentially be in student language and really be utilized on a daily basis in the classroom. So you'll have an opportunity to look at those visuals, if you haven't already. I know there's one by the door in, in the room, that there's some of the members of the Board of Ed in, and Mr. McNamara's in right now. There's two different posters. Again, one of the visuals, we really wanted an eye statements, and one captures the ideas behind each one of our skills and dispositions. So we also wanted to create a timeline and some action steps, which we were able to do, and we were able to share. I already mentioned that we really wanted to capture the advisory committee and the continued work of the advisory committee in our advisor process, advisory process. And then we presented to the Board of Ed Programming Subcommittee as well. Eric, you can go to the next slide. So looking into this year and where we are, this really brings us into today, and this and the continued work of the advisory committee in our advisor process, advisory process. And then we presented to the Board of Ed programming subcommittee as well. Eric, you can go to the next slide. So looking into this year and where we are, this really brings us into today. And this slide speaks to the implementation, really, of the skills and dispositions on a school-wide basis. This year, our teachers have been focusing on having students self-assess on the skills and dispositions in class after a learning task or after an assessment or after perhaps an entire unit in ways that hopefully are authentic and meaningful to things that they're already consistently doing. We really didn't want this to be something that looked like an additional task or something that wasn't meaningful or something that was standalone. We want it fully integrated into the tasks that students are completing on a daily basis in their class. Some examples might include a student completing a self-assessment on their motivation after completing a student-centered project on their own. Or maybe a student would be completing a self-assessment on their level of collaboration after completing a group project, things like that. So those are taking place so far this year. Go ahead, next slide, Eric. Well, this slide has a link to the grading rubric for the pilot portfolio. So we're really fortunate and grateful that we have an awesome group of 31 seniors that we asked for counselors to reach out to, and we reached out to some students. It's a diverse group of all kinds of different students. And we're really grateful that they're bringing us into this process, and they're assisting us really in modifying and revising the senior portfolio, basic process, new process, basically, as they create the presentation for the new senior portfolio. So we're really fortunate to have that. I think that we did this in a really thoughtful way to do it with a smaller group of students first before hopefully next year, the plan is to, and you'll see on the next slide, apply it to the greater group and the entire 2024 class. But so far, it's been a great process working with those students. We have a timeline. We meet on about a monthly basis. Some of the meetings are a little more stronger towards the end of the process. And we will have students who will present their senior portfolio in the new format in April. And then we'll also have a debrief process, and we've already kind of done that, maybe not as formally, with kids in regards to how the process is. So the new portfolio asks them to assess their senior portfolio or on their skills and dispositions, citing specific examples for each one and pulling in specific examples from their coursework during their four years, but also really to outline their accomplishments and reflect on some of the things that they would have potentially changed during their four years about their high school experience, as well as discuss their post-high school plans in a presentation format. So again, we're super grateful to our students for engaging with us in that process. It's been rewarding so far working with them and seeing what they're able to put together. And we're really excited to see those presentations over the next couple of months and hopefully also share those with the Board of Education.
Wow. That's awesome. I'll open it up to the board for any comments.
Sure.
And just before we do that, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify that, you know, I'm not so sure that it was clear in the presentation, and it's hard for Chris and I. We're kind of lost in the details of all of this. But for anyone who's not aware, our senior portfolio, though it has existed for many years, has just been a digital, you know, folder that they share and is graded by a couple of teachers who oversee this process. The change now that we are piloting with our students is that they not only have a portfolio, but they also have a visual presentation that they present to a group of students and teachers and anyone else that might be invited. This, we think, makes it a more meaningful process because they have to then sort of be there visually to, you know, be able to ask questions, to really provide insight into what they, their growth over the four years, and it hopefully helps them feel more invested in the final product and be able to showcase what they've really been able to accomplish at Ram. And again, as Chris said, this is something that our students will be doing in the next couple of months for us in the pilot group. And then next year, we're planning to do it with the entire senior class.
And the dream for the future is to engage the community in those presentations as well. So it's exciting things potentially to come.
Maybe get them on our TV broadcast. That's awesome.
Yeah, for sure.
Eric, anybody, anybody, any of the board comments? Go ahead, Mary. I think I could see your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, I did hear their initial presentation, and I was very excited about it because I think it takes this whole process to a new level. It is, as you know, Penny said, this has been in existence for quite a long time. My children did it when they went through. And I felt like it was more like a scavenger hunt they used to bore up. They had to like find a paper that showed this and find a paper that proved they learned this or. And I think this is going to be much more reflective for them and really foster kind of like that metacognition, like an awareness of what they've learned and what they can do with it. And having it be interactive, I think, just adds another layer of just, you know, a deeper, it's going to show a deeper understanding of what they've learned and how far they've come. And I also think the community engagement, if we could get that piece in there, that was also, you know, a really strong element to it as well because I think we talked a little bit about maybe even making connections with professionals in a field that they were interested in that's reflected in their portfolio. And it was just, it's really exciting. I'm really excited about it.
Yeah, I agree. Heather?
So I mean, I'm so glad that you guys are doing this. I frequently have candidates who come in and interview, and if they bring a portfolio, it's such a better interview for them to be able to show what they've done instead of just talk about what they've done. And I can tell you, if I've got two people you're putting up together, and one of them's got a portfolio that they can step me through why they did it, how they, you know, why they chose certain things, they're going to be 10 steps ahead of the other candidates that we interview. I think it's really a great thing.
Great. Thanks. Pam?
Yeah, obviously, this is the first time I'm hearing about this. But when Mary spoke about her children and my older children have also gone through the process before. And like Mary said, I remember it just kind of being that same way. Hey, do you have a paper that reflects this and this? And it was, it didn't really, it wasn't ownership for them. So again, I'm just learning about this, but it really, it really sounds like it's going to be, you know, really great for the students moving forward. So thank you for all your work on it.
Great. So anybody else, Eric? I'm not seeing anybody, any other hands, but is there anybody else on the board comments? So the only thing I would throw out there is that the thing I love about this is the integration of the self-awareness piece. I think the thing that we, you know, we get inundated with external evaluations and external feedback, and we, you know, kind of use that to sort of, I think, in our mind shape, you know, what are we strong at, what are we weak at, that kind of thing. But I think it's very important for you to do that self-assessment, too. And to be kind of, it sounds like we're sort of, I don't want, I guess, trained isn't the right word, but by doing it, integrating it into the different parts of what you're doing with each class, then you're making it sort of just automatic reflex and what you might, you know, to continually try to improve yourself and not just necessarily focus on external evaluations, but that self-awareness piece, too, which I think, you know, to echo Heather's comments, when I'm doing interviewing, I can generally sense sometimes a very strong gap in self-awareness that that's unfortunate. And so I think the fact that we're kind of teaching them at a very young age to incorporate that and to be aware of that, you know, be able to compare that to also their external feedback, that's important. So I don't have any other comments about that. That was a great presentation. Thank you both very much for the work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That was awesome. Let's move on to 11.4. Setting the Ram High School 2023 graduation date. So at this point, given that we are anticipating a snow, I think we've already, we are, we are having, we are having a snow day tomorrow. At this point, we would recommend or entertain a motion to set the Ram High School graduation date for June 15th, 2023.
Let me make the motion.
Yeah, I know. It's because we're incorporating today. No worries. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Gabe's second to that? Okay. Is there any discussion or debate? Anything that we need to?
No, you know, this is obviously just something that we have to do on a regular basis. We do it for a number of reasons. There's a lot of work and planning that goes into graduation. There's families that need to be notified and make plans so that family members from out of town can come in and attend. We also have to make sure that we identify the date well in advance for project graduation, which is a huge event. And so, you know, it's really advantageous for us to obviously set it at this point in the year. So I'm just super glad that we were able to incorporate tomorrow because that would have been bad if we set it for the 14th and then had a snow day on Thursday. So it worked out well.
So no more snow days.
No more snow days.
After this. Is there any other discussion, debate? Hearing and seeing none. We'll just do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstention? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. All right. So that brings us to 11.5, the first readings of Policy 5118, the non-resident students, which is enclosure 11.5A.
So I can just speak to this briefly for the board. The recommended changes are not because of the fact that we have currently any out-of-district students attending Ram schools. The board knows the fact that I have been communicated with on several occasions by either families of people that live out of town or even other school districts who have said to me, hey, I have some students or parents or families that are interested in attending Ram. And the current language in our policy around non-resident students is a little vague with regards to how any costs associated with additional programming, either for special education, five or four plans that could bring an additional financial burden to the district. It's vague. And I had a conversation about that with our school board attorney, and the recommended changes are coming directly from, which are in red on the versions of the policy that you have in your packet. Just the red language provides a greater level of clarity to the fact that the district could basically request additional tuition costs if we were incurring additional costs due to any type of special programming for students. So obviously, the fact that it's coming recommended from our attorneys at Shipman and Goodwin, I've obviously run this by our policy subcommittee, who unanimously supported bringing it to the board for first read as well.
Okay. Is anybody from the policy committee that wants to talk to?
Carrie's here, Eric's on the.
I think Joe and Gabe, too.
My apologies.
Any comments? No. Carrie, anything that you wanted to add to that?
What I will say is I want to thank those that were able to attend this past meeting that I was not. And I took, I read through, and I agree, since I wasn't at that meeting, with both of these policies that are being reviewed tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions from the board? Comments? Okay, and then Policy 5141.1.
Sure. So this is another existing policy that we are, that I'm making recommended changes for. The recommended changes in the policy include language that is new, specific to the use of blood glucose monitors for diabetic students, as well as the administration of opioid antagonists in the event of an emergency without prior authorization. The changes ensure that our policy aligns with the current legislation that has already been enacted. It's been reviewed by our nursing staff. You know, it's unfortunate that we live in a time right now when we want to make sure that we do have opioid antagonists here on site. Narcan is the one that we actually have a standing order from our health advisor, and so we have that on site. The district provides training for staff. We actually just had the training for the administrative team and the nursing staff. Members of the Hebron Fire Department came in and did the training for us. We're planning on opening up the training for more staffs. To me, this is one of those things, the more people that are trained in it, the better. Again, it's unfortunate that we have to have policy as such as this and have Narcan in our schools, but it's one of the things that is a good idea at this point. So again, the language of the policy is largely the same, except for the addition of that blood glucose monitoring and the addition of the opioid antagonists.
Okay. Again, policy, anybody from the policy committee, any comments? I know Carrie, you kind of covered both. Gabe, anything you want to add to? No? Okay. And then any comments or concerns or questions from the board? All right.
So this is a first read. It doesn't require any action. It'll go to the next meeting.
Okay, so that moves us on to 11.6, the financials.
Eva, what? Okay. Having reviewed the expenditure and revenue reports for the month ending January 31st, I'm projecting a net favorable position of $513,063. For revenue, I've already spoke to that. The excess cost grant for this year was reevaluated, and we are being set at 88%, which is about 18% higher than what we budgeted. We received the first payment actually in today's direct deposits. So we received a portion of the payment. We received two payments. So first one is February 27th. The second one comes towards the end of May, and we received about $288,000 for our first payment, which is very nice. Our expenditures that correlate to the net favorable position seem to be directly correlated to salaries and benefits from staff turnover, leaves and unfilled positions, as well as driver shortages for transportation services. The capital improvement fund coordinating meeting is scheduled to ensure timelines are set for the completion of the refrigeration units. So as you recall, for this year's budget, we were supposed to have our refrigeration units put in place over this past summer, unfortunately, due to supply chain issues. That did not happen, but we are in line to make sure that this happens over this coming summer. The senior project manager for the retention pond is still working on the designs and finalization of producing the plan. The drilling for the well took place on February 10th, and that, excuse me, was not successful. And the next item on the agenda, Mr. Schleyhoffer and Mr. McNamara will speak to that. The capital non-recurring fund. So I have some more positive news here. The gentleman who retired and is back from retirement closing out our project had some questions. And the consultant that was used for this project, Luke's, had answered some of those questions. So I'm really hoping that it's only a matter of time before they tell us that everything has been finalized and we can move forward with closing out that project. Pupil Services continues to adjust purchase orders to, as things come up through their IEP process. And they are doing a wonderful job of tracking their students and their expenditures. Are there any questions on anything that I may have presented that I can further explain to the board?
Open it up to the board. All right, that sounds like a no.
Okay, so hearing none, we're going on to 11.6B, which is the food service monthly sale. So as you can see, at the end of January 31st, we're currently reflecting a loss of $1,442.74 for this fiscal year. We, as Colin stated in his superintendent report, we were able to opt in to continue Smart Funds 2.0, which allows us to feed students one meal for breakfast and for lunch for free. So there's no costs, only the à la carte and or second meals would be charged to students. In addition, we were awarded $25,000, excuse me, for the salad bars, one for the middle school, one for the high school. Those have been ordered, and we're just awaiting the arrival of those. And then, excuse me, there is a third round of supply chain funding that we opted in for. But as of today's date, I still have not heard any more on that. Are there any questions that the Board of Education might have on this report?
Anybody from the board? Sounds like a no, Eva.
Okay, so 11.6C is the Ram Student Activity Report. It is in balance with the bank account as of January 31st, 2023. Are there any questions on the student activity? It is in balance with the bank account as of January 31st, 2023. Are there any questions on the student activity?
Nope.
Okay. 11.6D is the short-term investment funds. At the end of January, we received, our dividend was reinvested of $1,284.77. We are in balance and I also included the monthly, the daily rate sheets for the month of January for everybody's review.
Remind me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, remind me, Eva, what was our initial investment? Was it 300,000?
300,000.
Very nice.
There's no other questions. That concludes my reports. Thank you very much.
Great. Any other questions from the board for Eva? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to 11.7, which is the transfer of funds to cover additional costs of the well project. This transfer covers the additional amount for the attempted well. First well drilling covers the estimated amount for the second attempt at drilling a new well and the additional equipment required for the new well, in addition to the potential for hydro fracking. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Colin and then.
I'll give a very high level overview and then Michael Schleyhoffer is also in attendance and jump in and talk about some of the more finer details. So as I've informed board members and Eva just alluded to, you know, we had our first attempt at drilling our new well in early February. Unfortunately, it was unsuccessful. We had, we drilled 100 feet past the depth that we had initially contracted for and it didn't get anywhere close to the yield that we wanted or need. I believe it was a gallon, less than a gallon per minute, or maybe just above a gallon per minute. So certainly not what we needed. So there had been an alternative site that had been identified and approved to drilling on. We met as a facility subcommittee. We discussed this extensively. We had members of the team from Eastern Drilling Company or Eastern Well Solutions as a part of that meeting. And ultimately, the decision made was we're going to move and we're going to go to that alternative site. With that, we're hoping, obviously, that that, that the second site, we are more fortunate and it gets a higher yield. But we are, need to basically transfer funds to cover the costs of the additional drilling, as well as some essentially contingency funds in case things don't go well and we need to do such things such as hydro fracking. That's kind of where we are right now and I'll turn it over to Mike Schleyhoffer, who's with us as well, and he can get a little bit into the nitty gritty with the timeline and the details of costs.
Thanks, Colin. So just to recap on a few things. So on 210, February 10th, we drilled maximally 700 feet. That was an additional 100 feet past the contract. The cost for the additional 100 feet of drilling was roughly $1,500. And the additional steel casing to go in to hit the bedrock was additional 40 feet, which roughly ran us $2,000. So there was additional $3,500 past the contracted price on the original proposal. Going down 700 feet, where like Colin said, we're roughly at three quarters of a gallon per minute. Nowhere near where we need to be. We met. We're looking to do a second well in the approved location. We're looking for a 500-foot well. Factoring in 8750 was for the 500-foot well drilling, roughly 600 for 120 feet of steel casing. And then budgeting 6700 for hydro fracking, possibly the well, bringing that total to 21,450. That doesn't include the pump for the additional well that I just talked about. So talking with Alicia from Eastern Well Solutions in the additional amount there, they're recommending 58,000 to be put aside for the pump for the 700-foot well, the 500-foot well, additional wire for the 500-foot well, excavation controls and tying in possibly all three wells into the holding tank. So everything noted above that I had talked about would be a balance or a total transfer of $82,950 from the repair and maintenance, I'm sorry, excuse me, repair of the athletic fields to the irrigation well replacement fund.
Mike Sharon, did you want to?
I would like to ask a quick question. So, Michael, I think it would be helpful to the board to explain what our original well supply capability was prior to the initiation of this project. And if you could, and if you could, the well that we're looking to replace, the original well, still does generate a limited amount of water supply. So I thought it might be nice for everybody to hear the numbers so I can understand what we're trying to target for capacity replacement.
Yeah, sure. Good point. So the original well that's between the comp field and the varsity baseball field that's on the hill there wasn't producing, well, first off, the pump had failed. So we contracted with Eastern Well, had the pump removed, replaced. It was roughly $5,700 for the pump. Started the pump up and realized that the well is actually not producing enough water to, for the pump to draw the water out of the well. It was going dry. So we contracted with them, oh, I'm sorry, let me go back. So well recovery rate for that was roughly six gallons a minute. This well used to produce 33 gallons per minute. So recommendation was to hydrofrack the well. It was $8,200 to do that. They were able to bring the well production recovery rate to, I believe it was 15 gallons per minute by doing that. So this well now produces more than the new well that we just drilled. But it's still not at where we're at for the water needs for the irrigation, which is why we're looking to install additional well, or wells.
That targets something like 30 gallons per minute or total? Does that sound right? Is that right, what I remember, Mike?
Yes, that's, it was like a 33 gallon per minute well is what was there at one point. And when the pump had failed due to sucking basically air, it was down to six gallons a minute recovery.
So I actually had an opportunity to sit with the facilities group at the last opportunity that they had a meeting. And we, the contractors, you know, kind of laid out what we needed to be done. So it's, at this point, they're, correct me if I'm wrong, but this transfer kind of covers what we think will potentially could be the worst case scenario?
Yeah, it covered, correct. And Michael, tell me if I'm wrong, it covers the cost of one hydro fracking. There certainly is the possibility if the yield of the second drilling isn't good enough, we might need to hydrofrack that as well. Michael, is that correct?
Correct. There's one hydro fracking in here for the, for one well. We might need to hydrofrack another one, depending on what the 500-foot well that they drill in the middle of March produces.
So it depends, I guess, but what I recall from the meeting was that there, once we, once we get to the point where we've drilled the second well, we can identify whether or not we're going to need to operate two different wells, maybe three, to get the total gallons per minute that we need in order to service all of the fields that we need to service before we go spending all the money that we're talking about spending on trying to to recover, you know, rehab the fields that we have. So I think, anyway, I just think it's important to know that there's, there's still kind of a wide range of what potentially might happen. But what I understand, the transfer, the potential transfer being requested of us is to targeting kind of the worst case scenario and that we can, we can adjust from there. Mike, did I get that right? Mike Sharon?
Yes, you did. Thanks, Michael.
Any other comments from the facilities or from Mike Schleyhoffer? Okay, anything else you think you can follow? All right, so that being said, let's go ahead and see if the motion can be moved forward and then we can certainly debate it or discuss it at any point if that needs be. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to transfer $82,950 from the repair of the athletic fields in capital non-recurring to the irrigation well replacement in capital non-recurring. I'll give Mike that one since he's facilities. Is there a second?
Second.
Sue, thank you for the second. Is there any discussion or debate? Anything there? Nope. All right, hearing and seeing none, we'll entertain a voice vote. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? All right, hearing none. That carries unanimously. Which brings us to item, item 12, which is the committee reports. So at this point, I'll open it up to Facility Safety and Transportation. Mike?
I would like to speak to the February 14th meeting, but I was not present. So I would ask that Mr. McNamara potentially, potentially speak on my behalf or another member of the facility subcommittee.
Yeah, I could certainly do that. So we obviously discussed the well that we just took action on. So that's something that we discussed. The other thing that we did was we had, we had Ian Lacy from Tom Irwin Advisors present at that meeting as well. We wanted to discuss the process that we need to follow with regards to tackling the field projects that Mike alluded to when we were talking about the well. So obviously, the board moved forward with identifying those four projects that were, or the projects that we're going to do for, that came out of the field study. And there's a process that we need to follow. And so kind of Ian walked us through what that process is. I don't have my cheat sheets in front of me with me to kind of go through it, but you know, the first project, I think, Mike Schleyhoffer, are you still there? I don't know if he signed off or not. He probably logged off. I can pull up my notes. But basically, we talked about the project, what the project is going to be that we tackle first. We have to work with Ian Lacy and people from Tom Irwin Advisors to put together materials because we have to put the project out for RFP.
And I think we were also leaning forward on that, there's already been a schedule that's worked out.
Correct.
That has been kind of coordinated with the athletic director and the coaches that would be impacted so that we're not, we're not tearing up too many, too many fields at the same time that they can't actually conduct their practices and do what they need to do. Then I think the only other thing was that there was some recommendations about leaning forward on reservations in anticipation that we get at least potentially on people's schedules so that, so that we're not, we don't, we don't try to move forward and we're, we're waiting for time from contractors that might not be available.
Yeah. So there's, we obviously, we want to make sure that there's as little impact to the athletic, to the, to the field use as possible. So we're trying to create a schedule of tackling the projects in a manner where it'll have as little disruption to the use of the comp field as possible. So that's the process that we're going to follow. And you're absolutely right. We talked about making sure that the schedule that we adhere to and that we follow is going to be, you know, flow nicely for us. The only other piece of information that we discussed at the last facilities meeting was the idea of a digital sign. This is something that has been discussed, has been an ongoing discussion, I believe, pre-pandemic. This predates me. Basically, senior classes for the past several years, I think the past like four or five years, maybe six years, have been actually making donations to an account in order to hopefully get to a point where we have enough funding to have a digital sign installed out in front of the building, really on the corner of Wall Street and Ram Road, across the street from the 316 practice fields. There are some ordinances, there are some town ordinances against having digital signage in any location in town. So it's not just about having the financial means to get the digital sign installed, but it's also about getting the permission of the town to install a digital sign. Our perspective is it's advantageous for everybody. It's advantageous for the district. It's advantageous for the town of Hebron and the three surrounding, and the three other towns, or the two other towns as well, because it could be utilized to advertise community events. It could be advertised, could be utilized in the event that the school is utilized as an emergency shelter, which we are going to be a regional emergency shelter. So I'm cautiously optimistic, but there's a process that we have to follow. And, and it was after a conversation that I had with Mike Sharon about it, this was something that had not been brought to the facility subcommittee. So I wanted to just bring them up to speed on kind of what was going on and let them know that I'm kind of moving forward with at least trying to see if we can get our ducks in a row to go forward with the process.
If I remember right, it's not a matter of money because the money, for the most part, is available?
We have about $32,000 available from those donations. We'll get more from, from hopefully future senior classes. I'm not quite sure of the exact cost of what the sign is going to be, because it's not just the sign itself. It's also whatever it is that the sign is going to be encased in. The, what I've heard from members of the community who have, who have some insight as far as what's going to fly and what's not going to fly to get past planning and zoning is that, you know, they wouldn't want an aluminum case that looks like something out of, you know, the future. They, I think the idea is that it would, they'd want something to be either brick and mortar or brick and mortar looking that looks more traditional, that blends in more with the feel of the community and really the aesthetics of the school itself. So, so we, again, we've got a good sizable chunk of change for it. I just don't know if we have it all yet.
Yes, okay. Okay, Mike, is there anything else you wanted to add to that? Or are you good?
No, I'm good. Colin, thank you for the summary. I really appreciate the cover.
Okay, great. Finance?
So Eric's not here, but both Heather and Mary, I believe, were at that meeting. So I don't know if either one, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder.
Eric, did you have anything you wanted to share?
Well, basically, the subcommittee reviewed the audit report information that we took action on this evening. So that was basically what the meeting was about.
Okay. Heather, anything you wanted to add to that?
No, that's accurate.
Okay. Colin, anything you think is relevant? Any comments? Nope. All right. And then negotiations? I don't think we've had a meeting. Policy, Carrie?
So we went over what was discussed at the last meeting, which I already indicated I wasn't there. But we will be continuing to review policies just to make sure they're up to date. And next policy meeting, we will be discussing the dress code policies that we have. And we've actually asked two additional board members to attend. So we should have more to report next.
Okay. Gabe, did you have anything? Okay, Colin, anything else on policy that you thought? Okay, and then program?
We did not meet in February.
Got it. And then as far as facilitators, so I actually had an opportunity to go sit down with the Eastcon. I want to say he's the CEO. What's his?
He's executive director.
Executive director, sorry. As well as the chairman of the board for Eastcon to get my feet wet on understanding exactly what it is that the board of directors at Eastcon does and then also, you know, get a much better understanding of what the Eastcon program is. And so it was actually pretty impressive and pretty interesting how they fit into it. But so at the end of the day, they were having some financial issues, but I got the feeling from what I saw from the reporting that that is something that is well in hand and that should be not an issue going forward. It's only, it's impactful because I probably, I think, I don't think I really understood how much Eastcon does for all of the different school systems in its, in its, its region. You know, everything from doing transportation for, for our special education programs. There's food service programs that they do for some of the smaller schools. There's a whole bunch of back, sort of back office, behind the scenes things that they do that are integral to just about every school system in our region. I think there's 30-some schools or something like that. But anyway, they're, they're, they're pretty integral and they, and I mean, to our point, they're, they're helping us facilitate the long-term strategic plan. So there's a lot of different holes that in different parts of different programs that they fill. And it's, it's pretty impressive. They're actually almost, I want to say, you told me a $42 million a year budget. Interestingly, they are a sort of a state, but also somewhat private organization in that they have to generally, they operate off of a lot of grants, but they also have to generate their own revenue in some respects. And, but they do that, you know, from the perspective of trying to, again, fill in those gaps for the different, different schools in the region. But anyway, the, but the bottom line is, pretty interesting organization. They're very important to us, even though we might not necessarily see what they're doing. And it was great to get an opportunity to see that. And so I'll look forward to serving on their board for the rest of the year. As if there's no questions on EastCon, I'll ask Carrie to give us the update on Cave.
So I, I have met, or I shouldn't say I've met, but I've connected with the right people at Cave. There does not appear to be any meetings. I'm going to follow up this week with Nancy. And the only thing I am going to say is I've been paying a lot of attentions. I know they inundate all of our RAM boxes. But if anybody has the opportunity to register for some of their seminars, I have attended a couple in the past, and they are very good. Now, I do understand everybody works, but I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I think we've talked, I had an opportunity as part of the board policy to meet with our newest member, Pam, just to kind of go over Cave and give her some of that feedback. But Pam, certainly connect with Carrie offline if, if, if there's anything that you'd like to participate in. We do have a budget for that, and we encourage, as members have the availability, to certainly participate. I've been to a couple of them. They're, they're great. They're, they're very helpful.
Great, thanks.
Anything else you think of? Okay, so that moves us on to item thirteen, public comment, and I'll just ask you to bear with me one more time. Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro, community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside, so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. So at this point, is there, there's nobody physically present to present public comment? Is there anyone online that would like to present public comment? Please raise your digital hand or make yourself known so we can identify you. Anything there? All right, no digital hands being known, and no, nobody speaking up. We'll move on to item fourteen, which is the informational items. Fourteen point one, the calendar of events. Anything significant, Colin, you wanted to?
So we've got parent-teacher conferences coming up at both schools in the beginning part of this coming in the beginning of March. One of the things that I will just put out to all of our board members is that we have a blood drive at the high school. And I am quite confident that Ms. Green, our health service career teacher, she would be, she'd welcome an opportunity to take your blood.
To drain the board.
She, she refers to herself as our friendly neighborhood vampire when she sends out the reminders to staff. I have signed up. I'll be donating at eight-thirty in the morning on that, on the morning of the, I think it's the sixteenth of March, but I can certainly get that information. And it is something, if you're interested and able, I will tell you that I donate blood on a regular basis, and I've, I've delayed donating blood because I've known that this event is coming up. I literally get three or four phone calls a day. There's a significant blood shortage. So truly, in all honesty, if you have an opportunity to do it, we'd love to have you do it here at RAM. It'd be great. The only other thing that I'll mention, it's not on the calendar. We, we've had a lot of, our athletic teams have success. Many of them going on to postseason play. Unfortunately, our girls' basketball team, who had a great regular season, just lost in their tournament game to Weston. I didn't see the final score of the game, but they were down by about eight or nine with about a minute and a half left. So, but they, they played really, really well. This coming weekend, our cheerleading team is going to be competing at states. They have had success over the past couple of weekends. They won the division in this, their division in the CCCs. And they are going to be competing at the state competition at states Saturday. So that's something that is not on the calendar, but again, if it's something that people are interested in attending, it'd be great. And that, those are just some of the things that I think are worth noting.
We have two wrestlers going to the New England's this weekend in Rhode Island.
Awesome.
Yeah. Okay, and then item fourteen point two, any trends, anything we need to know about?
No, no, I don't really see any trends. It's, you know, we're obviously just monitoring student behavior and.
Okay. Any questions on informational items, or any comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, that moves us on to item fifteen, adjournment. And at this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Somebody? Gabe, Gabe made the motion, and I think that, was that Mary?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, Mary seconds it. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, hearing none. We will, that is, a motion will carry, and I thank everybody, and please be safe. I hope nobody loses power.
Yeah.
Safe travel, guys.
Thank you.
See you, guys.